Call to order the Maplewood City Council Special Meeting for 5:30 Monday, December 3. First of all, I just want to welcome you all here. Thank you for coming. Our purpose here today is for canvassing the results of the recount for council member. And with that, I hope you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have a roll call by our city clerk Andrea Sint.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Abrams.
Here.
Councilmember Zhang.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Mayor Slawick.
Here. So everyone is here. Next, approval of agenda. Is there a motion?
Move approval of agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Zhang and seconded by Juneman, approval of agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the agenda is approved. Item E is unfinished business, which there's none, and then again, we have the new business, which number one is the canvassing results of the recount for council member. I'm going to open with just a couple comments and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Funk. One thing, you know, this is very unusual, I have to say, in, you know, five years, we've never had a meeting like this before. So I want to thank both of the council member competitors for the courage to run. It is not easy to run for office. And for the time that they spent, it takes hundreds and hundreds of hours as people go door to door, as they talk to residents, as they take complaints, as they work through issues. And who knew that in Maplewood, we would come out with a tie and then a recount. And that's tonight, basically, what we're doing. So I want to make sure I thank both Mary Lee Abrams and Nikki Villa Vicencio for running. There's a process on how we're going to move through the next parts of the agenda, and I'm going to ask Mr. Funk to explain that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Certainly, I think we've all experienced that this is a civics lesson in that every vote counts. And I think we can, we look back at the last couple weeks, that certainly rings true with this election. Just to give you a little bit of a summary, on November 13th, and that was just a couple weeks ago, the city council, who serves as the canvassing board, canvassed the results of the November 6th general election. And as you've noted, Madam Mayor, that for the race of city council, the results concluded there is a tie between Mary Lee Abrams, who is our incumbent city council member, and Nikki Villa Vicencio. In canvassing those results, Kathy Juneman was the highest vote receiver for city council for those two open seats, and then again, a tie between Ms. Abrams and Ms. Villa Vicencio. A coin flipped, a coin flip determined the outcome of that tie. And Ms. Villa Vicencio was the winner by the coin flip. Ms. Abrams, then by statute, is allowed to, by writing, request a recount. That recount occurred on Tuesday, November 27th, and is conducted by Ramsey County. Joe Mansky is here this evening, and I know that if there's questions that come up at any point, we certainly can turn to Mr. Mansky as well. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sint here in just a minute. As you know, Ms. Sint is our city clerk, and she also serves as our recount official. Ms. Sint will provide a summary of the recount and describe the process used on the recount, again, that occurred on Tuesday, November 27th. You'll hear that after the recount, Mary Lee Abrams currently has five more votes than Ms. Nikki Villa Vicencio. In your packet, Mayor and City Council, you'll see a summary of those votes. Again, Ms. Sint will go through those. I say a difference of five votes. The total numbers at this time are 5,757 to 5,752. Part of Ms. Sint's role as a recount official is to help oversee the recount that occurred. Four ballots are on your, for your consideration this evening that are being challenged. Ms. Sint will provide an overview of her determination of those ballots. So there's, there are four actions that will first occur based on the challenged ballots. There is a fifth ballot that was found. Ms. Sint will also discuss this as well. So council, before you this evening are a total of five actions that you will take. There is a staff report in front of you. I know all of you are seeing this all for the very first time. That was done intentionally to make sure that the process remained preserved. And so in front of you is a staff report that is written by staff and has the recommendations from City Attorney Ron Beatty. Mr. Beatty is also here this evening, and he will be discussing, is available to discuss voter intent. Voter intent, as well as the, that statute and the Secretary of State guide, voter guide was provided to you last Friday. That really is the foundation for which you need to apply, the basis for making a determination on those four ballots. So there are, again, five action items here before you. We'll be going through each of those here in a minute with, with Ms. Sint. The last action for you, there's a sixth action that's required, and that is an overall summary of the results of the first five decisions that you'll be making. We'll, as staff, we're recommending that as Ms. Sint goes through each one of those first five, that will pause for discussion of the council. You will then, by motion, need to make a determination of those ballots. There is a recommended action in front of you by staff report. And then, Madam Mayor, I'd recommend that at that time, if you wanted to allow each of the parties, in this case, Ms. Villa Vicencio or Ms. Abrams, to comment on each of those ballots before the council makes a motion and determination, that that would be appropriate. It is not a public hearing, but given the circumstances, we would, I think that we would recommend to staff that you would allow for comments from either, either party.
Mr. Funk, before the vote is taken?
Before the vote is taken, that is correct.
Thank you.
So we'll conclude with, again, as I mentioned, the sixth action item will be a resolution in which we will, kind of, as we go along here, keep a tally, keep a running total of how those first five are determined. And then, we do have staff available. So as we prepare for that resolution, we'll probably pause for just a few minutes. We will, as staff, Ms. Deb Schmidt will be working with us and updating the resolution based on the outcome, and then we'll get that reprinted and back in your possession for that sixth and final action step. So with that, Madam Mayor, it's turned over to you for Ms. Sint to walk us through the rest of the process.
Thank you. Good report, Mr. Funk, Ms. Sint. Councilmember Abrams.
Mayor, I believe it's appropriate for me to recuse myself from the decision-making of the council, and so I'm going to go take a seat in the audience.
Thank you. So I will just say, you know, I'm trying to think about the logistics of when there is time for comment, if you want to comment. I, we would, you would come up to the, this microphone, Mr. Funk, is that how it would work?
That is correct. So we have, Ms. Sint will be in the audience, and then I believe both of our candidates are also in the audience. And so when it, when it comes time for that, if either side wishes to comment, we would invite them to the podium.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see. Thank you. Tonight, we are hearing just from the candidates that are involved in the recount. Thank you. Ms. Sint?
Thank you, council, mayor, council. As Assistant City Manager Funk has gone over, we had the recount on the 27th. It was held at the Play-Doh Office of Ramsey County. Assembled there was some city staff, county staff, county election judges, the candidates, and their, any representation that they had with them. And just in general, I would like to say my impressions from not knowing what we were going into, basically, the recount teams that Ramsey County put together were very systematic and methodical in how they followed the procedures with absolutely no bias to what the outcome was. Really, the most thing, the thing that they were most concerned about was that they did it properly and, and how they were supposed to do it. And the candidates and their teams were very civil and very respectful, and the whole proceeding was very, very impressive to me that everybody was civil with each other in that formal setting. So with that, at 8:30, Dave Triplet with Ramsey County gave direction to everybody so that everybody knew what we were doing. We needed to do a manual inspection of each ballot, and by Minnesota state statute, a recount, administrative recount is a manual inspection of each ballot. And we had 17,840 of them to look at. We had four teams of four people, and as we were told, there would be one precinct opened at each table, and it was only one precinct per table, and so there was no, there could be no combination of the precinct ballots themselves. The ballots themselves came from sealed boxes that had been in a stored, locked room. They were brought out, they were still sealed, they were opened up. Inside, there were ballots from multiple sites because there are 12 early voting sites, as well as absentee sites, and so they had all been compiled together. Then, everything was opened up. First, the ballots were faced, then they were sorted into four piles, they were counted in twenties, they were tallied, signed, sealed, and then we repeated everything. There was a fifth team, which was one city employee and one county employee, that after the first four precincts had been faced, they faced the rest of them. And we started with the largest precinct, as Mr. Mansky had found out that it's best to start with the largest counts, so that the boxes got lighter, and so did the spirits as the day got longer. And so to begin with, I just wanted to let you know what facing meant. The ballots are all in the box any which way. So first, they went through and they made sure that the ballot had the council member race on the top. So everybody was turning ballots, getting them all set to the right direction that was facing them. Once it was faced, there was one person that was the sorter of the table, and they had the pile of ballots in front of them, and then they sorted it into four piles. One was a vote for Abrams only, for Villa Vicencio only, for both of them, or for neither of them. And that one sorter would quietly say who the vote was for. Three other people were watching, along with the candidates, anybody from the candidates' team could also be watching, and so they would take it and they would put it in the respective pile. All the ayes, so that if you put it in the wrong pile, it's the wrong pile, we're going over here instead. Then, once there was four piles and all the ballots were there, they would then, two people, people in teams of two, they would silently count. And they didn't count, you know, if you had a pile, you'd start probably counting like this. That is not how it's done. You take the ballot and you bring it over. And quietly, two people would each count. And once the person got to what they would say is 25, they'd say 25, yes, and then they would put it over to the side as a group of 25, and they would start with the next. Everything was very methodical. Everybody did it the same way. It was amazing. And then, once they had everything counted, and they had their piles of 25 and whatever remained, they would count how many piles, they would calculate how much that was, they put it on a post-it note, and then they would go to the next pile. So once all of those were counted, they would call Dave Triplet and myself over, and we would fill out a summary sheet. We'd ask how many for Abrams only, mark it down. We'd go through and ask what each four piles had. We'd total it up, and then we checked it against the canvassing report from the 13th. Six of the precincts, everything went perfect. Every, the numbers matched. We would say to the representatives or to the candidates, everybody's satisfied? Yes. Okay. Seal, put the ballots back in the box, seal it up, and then the next precinct would come out. Three times, all the ballots were accounted for, but there was some difference in the vote count. So then it was, where could it possibly be? Where did we put it in the wrong pile? And they were all found, they were maybe in the wrong pile because they are humans. And so maybe it was an overvote, that the machine said, nope, nothing counts here because there were three marks, it doesn't count, it's an overvote. By looking at the ballot, you could definitely tell who the voter intended to vote for, and so we counted those. And so with all of that, whenever there were overvotes, both candidates were allowed to see the ballot where you agreed, and we would, we would finish that precinct. There were three precincts that we got to that point of, we have all the ballots, now here are the ones that we have issues with, and there wasn't consensus as what to do with the ballot. And at that point, as the recount official, I needed to make a determination. Of course, this all happened within the first hour of the recount. But, so I looked at the first ballot and made a determination, and based that, that became the consistent piece that I had to go with. And those for final determination, you will make tonight. And then we came to the last precinct, and we had one ballot unaccounted for, and we knew it also had a vote for council member Abrams on it. Because of the canvassing reports, we could pinpoint what it was. We then took the next two hours going through all of the early voting site boxes, looking for one precinct 10, Maplewood ballot. They looked through, I don't know how many boxes. They brought, they brought them out, they looked through them, it wasn't there. They exhausted all the A, all the AB, all of the early voting. They even looked at other precinct, other precinct 10s in Ramsey County, to see if by chance it got in there. Was not anywhere. So it was agreed upon at that point by both candidates that we were going to be done for the night. And so we all sat down and went through the totals. And that was myself reading off the summary statements to Joe Mansky, to Mr. Mansky, and he was recording it to make sure that the numbers that he had throughout the day were identical. They were. We then read off from a spreadsheet the totals that he had, just to make sure there weren't any, any issues. There was a lot of double checking done. We then printed out the unofficial results and also made copies of the challenge ballots. And those were provided to both of the candidates, so that when they left there, they had that information with them. Wednesday morning, county staff came here to City Hall, and we went through all of the ballot boxes to see if by chance there was a ballot in there. It's been known to happen. It was not there. We went through all the unused ballots at City Hall here. It was not there. Upon that, Mr. Mansky had an idea of where to look for it, back at Ramsey County. And so they went back and they looked at another, they looked at the, at precinct 10's election night spoiled ballot envelope. And when they opened that up, a spoiled ballot would be something that has an obvious defect to it. It has an overvote on it. There's something wrong with the ballot. And in that spoiled envelope, there were defective ballots, and there was one ballot that had no defects on it, and it also had a vote for Ms. Abrams. And we, as city and county staff, believe and agree that this is the ballot for which they sought exhaustively. So that, at this point, brings us to tonight and to the responsibilities of the canvassing board. So first, we're going to be asking you to determine the challenge ballots and make a motion on each one of them, and then make a motion on the found ballot. And at that point, we are going to take some time to just make sure we adjust the resolution numbers and the abstract numbers appropriately. And then we will ask for a motion to approve the resolution. And there, you will all need to sign the abstract, again, like you have previously. So at this point, I guess I'll just take a little pause. That kind of sums up what happened at the recount, at the event itself. And so if there's any questions or anything, we could go with that, if, about the event itself. Otherwise, we'll go straight into talking about voter intent and voting on the challenge ballots.
Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Sint, can you tell us how many defective ballots there were?
In the spoiled envelope?
Yeah, the spoiled envelope.
I don't have that number. Maybe Mr. Mansky does? Okay. Yeah, about 10 of them. I guess one of them even had a footprint on it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just to follow up on that question, when there's a defective ballot, are they, it kicks it out, right, and then they're allowed to do a new one?
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, if you'd like to proceed.
Okay. So voter intent is what you're going to be using to determine these challenge ballots. And we have sent out to you the Minnesota state statute 204(c)(22), and also the Secretary of State pictorial information that they have from their 2018 recount guide. And they are also in your packet, page 5 and 6 and 7. What you will see with the ballots themselves, there are copies of them. I do have the originals here. They are sealed from the recount evening, but they are here in case you want to see them. We can open up the envelopes. So what you will notice, challenge ballot number one is on page 12, and in the upper left-hand corner, you will see that it says, challenged by Villa Vicencio, number one, vote for Burgland. So what that means is that candidate Villa Vicencio is who challenged the determination, and this was the first one, first ballot, and the determination is that it was a vote for Burgland. If you look at the ballot itself, you can see that, how I arrived at my determination, I should say. So I could see that there were Xs in amongst the boxes, and then somebody went back and filled out and blackened out their choices, except for one of the votes that you can see there. So that is, the determination I made was that it was only a vote for Burgland. And they challenged that, so that's why it is here for you today. If you need information as to what state statute says, I would direct you to City Attorney Beatty.
Mayor, I'd move to count the vote on challenge ballot number one for Villa Vicencio, and the vote be counted for the candidates other than Villa Vicencio or Abrams in precinct 13.
Second. Moved by Smith and seconded by Zhang. Can you repeat to?
To count a vote on challenge ballot number one for Villa Vicencio, and that a vote be counted for the candidates other than Villa Vicencio or Abrams in precinct 13.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Zhang?
Thank you, Mayor. And so this one would be a motion to count this vote for Nick, for candidate Villa Vicencio, and the other one that is not, the other vote for the other city council candidate that is not challenged. And so in this case, for Burgland and Villa Vicencio. Just clarification.
Burgland's votes are already counted.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm, I just need to clarify, Councilmember Smith, so you're not agreeing with the staff, right?
No, I am agreeing with the staff. They recommended to count, to count this.
Okay. See, I just, am I seeing, I just says, it says vote for Burgland, and then it doesn't, where is the?
Number one on the motions, on the...
Ah, okay, so it has to correlate back, yes. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. That's what, that's what I kept thinking it should be, but I couldn't exactly, it didn't look like it said that. Is there any other?
If I could, Madam Mayor, just to maybe clarify, or maybe Mr. Beatty was going to jump in. Maybe just to, again, clarify how, how these appear to you, because what you see on this ballot is what Ms. Sint will be presenting with the next three. So in the upper left-hand corner, it says challenged by Villa Vicencio.
Right.
Ms. Sint is our recount official, and so it was determined by our recount official that this ballot would receive a vote for Mr. Burgland only and not Ms. Villa Vicencio. Her and her team challenged that this vote should have been counted. And so Ms. Sint explained that as the recount official, it was not counted as a vote for Ms. Villa Vicencio on the recount day. And so it's been challenged, and what's being recommended by City Attorney Mr. Beatty is that this should be counted based on state statute.
Okay.
And state statute discusses voter intent.
Right.
For more clarification, Mr. Beatty can certainly weigh in.
Madam Mayor, council, that's exactly right. The reason I asked the clerk to distribute the statute to you is that, on Fridays, that you'd have a chance to look at this. Sections 10 and 11 are going to be the relevant one. I think it's the second sentence in section 10 which informed me that, yes, as the city, as Mr. Funk just indicated, I disagreed with the determination not to count this. And my recommendation is that it should be counted for Ms. Villa Vicencio.
Okay, thank you. This time, would either candidate like to comment? Okay. So no comments from the candidates. Any further discussion among the council? Okay, now I'm going to take a vote. I'm going to ask for those in favor, and if anyone is opposed, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing four, zero, the motion prevails, which is that challenge ballot number one counts for Villa Vicencio. Or adds, I don't know if I'm saying that exactly correctly, right, is the motion as the recommended action?
Correct.
So do you want to walk us through number two?
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. So the next ballot, number two, again, was a challenge with Villa, from Villa Vicencio. Looking at the ballot, it was similar, that somebody had gone through and done slashes and gone through, it seemed, again, and blackened out. And so my determination is that it was a vote for Juneman only. And they challenged that, and so that is in, before you.
Move to count a vote on challenge ballot, ballot number two for Villa Vicencio, and that a vote be counted for the candidates other than Villa Vicencio for Abrams in precinct seven.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Zhang and seconded by Smith. A motion to count the vote on challenge ballot number two for Villa Vicencio, and that a vote be counted for the candidates other than Villa Vicencio or Abrams in precinct seven. Any further discussion? Okay. Is there any comment from, I can't see Nikki, any comment? Okay, comment, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing four ayes, the motion passes. Next ballot?
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mayor. So the next ballot, number three, again, it was a challenge by Villa Vicencio. I had said a vote for Abrams only. Looking at the ballot, again, there was checkmarks throughout, and then somebody went back and blackened out. So if nothing else, I am consistent.
All right, thank you.
Motion to count votes on challenge ballot number three for both Villa Vicencio and Abrams in Precinct 12.
Second.
It's been moved by Zhang and seconded by Juneman. Number three, motion to count ballots on challenge ballot number three for both Villa Vicencio and Abrams in Precinct 12. Is there any further discussion? Would either candidate like to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes all, and no nays, four oh. We are now to motion number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Number four, challenge ballot number four, was challenged by Villa Vicencio. I had said it was a vote only for Abrams. Looking at it, to me, it seemed the voter intent was for Abrams only, as Villa Vicencio's name was scratched out, or blackened out.
Is there a motion?
Uh...
Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Mayor. May staff re-explain number four, the motion for number four again? So, this is a motion to not count a vote on the challenge ballot number four for Villa Vicencio, and the vote for Abrams be counted in Precinct 12.
Mr. Funk?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I really want to default to Mr. Beatty, I think, in his explanation. This, again, goes back to the statute that has been provided to you as it, as it relates to voter intent. And so, as outlined by Ms. Sint, initially, Ms. Sint ruled that it would be a vote for Ms. Abrams only. It is being challenged, as noted. And then, this is where voter intent statute applies. And so, it's been determined by Mr. Beatty that Ms. Villa Vicencio's vote would not count, is staff recommendation. And then, again, I turned over to Mr. Beatty for his reasoning on that.
Mr. Beatty.
Madam Mayor, Council, yes. Effectively, the first three ballots that you looked at were the same situation. And then, the same section of the statute that I pointed out, I think, applied. This is a different situation. I think you would look at subdivision 11 of the statute in front of you, which indicates what to do with erasures. In this, the first three cases, I disagreed with the staff's original conclusion. In this case, I agree with the staff's conclusion. This is, in my, in my opinion, the voter intent was apparently not to vote for Villa Vicencio, but to cast a vote for Abrams. And so, that's my recommendation.
Counsel? Turn, question?
I think the statute's pretty clear on this.
Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Mayor. So, subdivision 11 for 204(c)(22), it's, it says, "An attempt to erase or obliterate one of the marks." And then, the second sentence is about an attempt to, attempt, attempt made to obliterate a write-in name. This one is not a write-in.
Doesn't matter.
On the ballot. And I, I don't know, I don't see it as trying to obliterate.
First sentence that applies here.
Yes, I see that.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to not count a vote on challenge ballot number four for Villa Vicencio, and that the vote for Abrams on this ballot be counted in Precinct 12.
Second.
It's been moved by Smith and seconded by Juneman. The motion not to count a vote on challenge ballot number four for Villa Vicencio, and that a vote for Abrams on this ballot be counted in Precinct 12. I am going to ask for both ayes and nays. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, oh, we can have a comment. I, hold on a second. I, is there any discussion? Would either candidate like to discuss? Okay, are you representing? If you can introduce yourself for the record.
Madam Mayor, members of the canvassing board, my name is Rick Varco. I was the sort of lead volunteer for Nikki's recount campaign, Nikki Villa Vicencio's recount campaign. I'll be very brief. Our basic principle is that rules for interpreting voter intent that are designed for situations where you're trying to determine between two marks, whether they are for one candidate or another candidate, are not necessarily appropriate for a ballot where you can vote for up to two candidates. As long as we don't create an overvote by interpreting a mark in a ballot target as intent to vote, we should treat it as a vote for that candidate. In essence, if such a mark would be treated as a vote for a, in a single candidate race, we should not refuse to count it in a multiple candidate race, simply because there is a fuller or better mark for another candidate. Thus, when considering a two candidate race with marks in the target box for two candidates, the question is not which mark shows clearer intent for one candidate or the other, but simply if each is sufficient unto itself to show intent. So, specifically, in this race, or in this ballot, if this were a single candidate race, we would agree that, under the Minnesota Secretary of State Recount Guide, this is a classic case of the obliteration. And if you look at page nine of your packet, or page 17 of the Secretary of State's Voter Guide, they show a case where there's a filled-in mark for one candidate, and then, somebody blots out the name. If this was a one-person race, we would not be here. But this is not a single candidate race. Regardless of a mark in the Abrams target box, the question is simply, would the mark in and around the Villa Vicencio target box indicate an intent to vote? And in this case, because the target box has been completely filled in, we think the ballot should be counted for both Abrams and Villa Vicencio. It is unclear to us whether this is an attempt to not vote for Villa Vicencio, or a very aggressive and excited vote for Villa Vicencio. And I would just ask you to think, if it was just the Villa Vicencio mark in a one-person race, would you count this as a vote for the candidate? Or would you count it as somebody who decided not to vote for any candidate? The fact that people don't go to elections and mark ballots to not vote for people should lean you towards counting it for Nikki Villa Vicencio. We shouldn't read this as an obliteration unless we have to, and we don't have to. So, thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. Counsel? Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so it goes back to what I said about the first sentence. It's, it starts off, "If the names of two candidates have been marked, an attempt has been made to erase or obliterate one of the marks." And so, I, I think the difference here is that we have, we can vote up to two candidates for this particular spot here. And so, that's where I'm, I'm 50/50 on, because if there was three, and that was, Nikki's was the one that was marked, you know, we, it's a different conversation, but...
Councilmember Zhang, anything else?
Yeah, I would lean, lean towards counting this vote for Nikki.
Councilmember Juneman.
Well, now, I'm confused, because I, I don't believe that, that's what that first sentence says. I believe that what he said is what it is. If the names of two candidates have been marked, and an attempt has been made to erase or obliterate one of the marks, a vote shall be counted for the remaining marked candidate. So, it says, if it's, there has been an attempt to obliterate one of the two that was made, then you count the one for the remaining candidate, as the attorney said.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anything in statute guidance as to multiple candidate situations?
Mr. Beatty.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm not aware of anything other than this situation. I think the first sentence does assume that it's a, a two candidate, or a one-position race. To me, the, the clear intent of this, though, is to look at whether there's been an intent to erase or obliterate. And in my opinion, there was an attempt to obliterate.
I think it's unclear to me, I mean, I think it's, that could very well be the case, but it's, it's unclear to me, I think, to Councilmember Zhang's point, it's, it's not a, a vote that precludes a vote for someone else, which, which, if I'm unclear on it, I, I don't know that it's, I think the default should be to count votes rather than to not count them. I, I don't disagree with that argument. But it is also, boy, it's, it looks pretty obliterated, too. So, it's, it's pretty tricky.
If, yeah, if there is a tie, I asked Mr. Funk what happens in the case of a tie.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, I turned to Mr. Beatty, it's a matter of a legal question, but I, I think the short answer is, with any vote of the council, you need a simple majority. So, and for this evening, with any of these motions here before you, because you have four members at the dais, you would need a simple majority. In this case, three members would need to vote to, for a motion to prevail. If you end up in a tie situation of two to two, the motion would not prevail, and in this case, the vote would not count.
Right.
For the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Just to be clear, this, a yea vote here is to not count the vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a double negative.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, if I could provide clarity, Madam Mayor and Council, there was a motion and a second made to, and then, go back to this, to the recommended action. There was a motion to count, excuse me, a motion to not count a vote on the challenge ballot for Ms. Villa Vicencio. And so, voting aye means that the vote would not be counted.
Right.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Hearing two, 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 the vote goes...
So, it would not be counted. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, on a two, two vote, neither, the vote, the vote would not count towards Ms. Villa Vicencio.
Wait. What, what happens to the actual motion, though? What happens to the motion if it's a tie vote?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Wait. If it was challenged, and we just voted to not count it, wouldn't that mean it would be counted?
The motion to not count was just killed.
Failed. So, it should be counted?
Well, then, somebody can make a counter motion, then.
Ah, that's a good idea.
So, I'll pause for a moment.
Count, move to, a counter motion?
Well, just move.
Move for a motion to count a vote on challenge ballot four for Villa Vicencio, and that the vote for Abrams on this ballot be counted in Precinct 12.
So, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there further discussion? So, Mr. Funk, Mr. Beatty, if there's a tie on this vote, what happens?
It won't count.
Okay. So, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No.
So, again, we have a tie vote, so.
All right.
Does not count.
So, it just doesn't count.
That is, so, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so that is correct. So, you've had two motions that have, in essence, failed due to a lack of a majority vote of the council.
Right.
So, at this point, the motion, both motions fail, and both votes for Ms. Villa Vicencio and Ms. Abrams are not counted. The only way they could be counted is if, in your conversations, you can convince one, one of the other sides to vote in a majority situation. So, as of now, no votes count.
Let's move to...
Vote for Mary Lee counts on that ballot.
Does, doesn't, that's what I was...
I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Funk, Mr. Beatty, doesn't the, vote, the other vote count?
So...
Mr. Beatty, could you comment, and then, I'd like...
Madam Mayor, my understanding is that that ballot simply does not count.
The entire ballot, or?
Well, for that office, neither of those votes counts.
Because the way I read this is that the vote for Abrams was, was approved by the election judges already.
It is not in the totals.
It is not in the totals?
These, the challenge ballots are not reflected for either of those, either of the candidates in the ring count in the canvas totals that...
If I, if I could, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would encourage Mr. Mansky to come forward. I mean, certainly, as we prepared for this evening's...
And just move to count the one for Mary Lee.
I think we need clarification from Mr. Mansky. And so, Madam Mayor would request Mr. Mansky come forward. Certainly, as staff was preparing for this evening's meeting, we certainly considered all the potential outcomes. Certainly, we discussed in a two, two situation, but whether you can split up a ballot is probably a fair question that Mr. Mansky should answer.
Mr. Mansky.
Madam Mayor, and maybe I'll direct this question to the city attorney, that if, if the question is to consider the Abrams vote separately, then perhaps the, the council should divide the question into two different motions, one to consider the vote for Abrams, the other to consider the vote for Villa Vicencio.
So, Mr. Mansky, to be clear, yeah, if a divided vote, it would mean creating a separate motion.
Right.
Yes.
Mayor, I would move to count a vote on challenge ballot number four for candidate Abrams on this ballot to be counted in Precinct 12.
Second. It's been moved by Smith and seconded by Juneman, that, that to count the vote on challenge ballot number four for Abrams. Is there any further discussion?
And...
Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I will be voting for this motion. It is clearly that this person is voting for Abrams. Not, no, nothing questionable on this mark, so I will be voting for it. Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there any opposed? No. So, hearing ayes all, the motion passes. Count challenge ballot number four for Abrams. And now, there is number five. Councilwoman Juneman, do you have a comment?
Oh, no, you just didn't put my light, turn my light off. Oh.
He forgot that.
Turn my light off.
That's, that's our monitor over here. Yes.
Ms. Sint?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the fifth motion would be to count a ballot for Abrams, for, on the found ballot for precinct, that was, for precinct 10 that was unable to be examined the night of the recount.
Mayor, I'd move to count a vote on found ballot for Abrams, and that a vote be counted for the candidates other than Villa Vicencio or Abrams in Precinct 10.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Smith and seconded by Juneman, a motion to count a vote on found ballot for Abrams, and that a vote be counted for the candidates other than Villa Vicencio or Abrams in Precinct 10. Is there any further discussion? Oh. Is there any comment by either side? Okay. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So, is my understanding, at this point, there would be a break, or you need to tally the votes, or what was, what was the process? Can you reiterate that?
Correct, Mayor. So, right now, Deputy City Clerk Schmidt is going back to rerun the resolution, so you have a correct resolution with the, the totals for, that reflect the votes that you have approved at this point. And we will also have the, the proper spreadsheet that's part of your abstract, which will then have the information for the challenge ballots. That is page, it's towards the end of the packet. Is that is page 20? So, that information will be then categorized in there, because that is what you are signing to as a, as a canvassing board.
Call for a short recess until we have that information. We are in recess.
If you want to, I think, I think this is what, so you're going to tell us where we're at?
Correct.
And then, is, is Ms. Schmidt going to talk, or you're going, you have the totals from?
I have, correct, correct, Mayor.
And so, just to be, if you could be as clear as possible to reiterate, because, you know, what's, what's difficult for me is typically, people at home would have a copy of what we have, and the ballot doesn't work like that with the canvassing board. You know, it's different. So if you could just be very clear on the outcomes and, is, and the canvassing results.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. So what we have is a resolution that we can, we will provide to each of you. The abstract itself will show the vote totals. We have that challenge ballot one had a vote for Villa Vicencio, challenge ballot two increased a vote for Villa Vicencio, challenge ballot three for both Abrams and Villa Vicencio, challenge ballot four, one for Abrams, and the found ballot one. So, effectively, we had an increase of three for Villa Vicencio, and an increase of three for Abrams. So, we have Villa Vicencio at 5,755, and we have Abrams at 5,760. That is then still accounting for the full 17,840 ballots.
Okay. Thank you.
So at this point, with, with this information, we do need a sixth motion, which is a motion to approve the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution canvassing results of recount for council member from the November 27, 2018 recount.
It's been moved by Smith and seconded by Juneman, a motion to approve the resolution canvassing results of recount for council member from the November 27, 2018 recount.
Should we read the totals that she just gave us into the record, or not?
I think that's probably a good idea, is it not?
It is, it is reflected in the resolution.
Oh, okay.
You. Yeah, could we see that? So, the word.
Mayor, there's no public copy.
Oh. Councilmember Zhang.
Here. Thank you, Mayor. Maybe if, want to see if the two candidates want to have, I'm going to say, anything prior to the final vote.
Maybe we could just read this.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Okay, since I seconded it, is okay if I read it?
Yeah, so hold on a second.
I'm not sure you know how crappy it works there.
There's one, one thing at a time, everybody. So we, Councilmember Zhang asked if candidates want to say anything. Councilmember, Commission Member Villa Vicencio said she does not want to speak. Councilmember Abrams, you want to say anything at this time? Okay, so neither candidate would like to say anything. Council Juneman, Councilmember Juneman has suggested that we read the resolution canvassing results of recount for council member into the record. I think that is a good idea, and so.
The following is also the recount as amended by the canvassing board. Votes cast for Mary Lee Abrams, 5,760. Votes cast for Nikki Villa Vicencio, 5,755.
Okay, and then it goes on to have the six, the different, the motions are in there, and everything else is, I don't know if we call it memorialized, but it is all in the resolution. And, Councilmember, anything else?
I have one final.
Yeah. Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this, this process has been very frustrating, to say the very least. What the public, you know, sees out there is three different results. On election night, the first recount, and then the second recount after the coin toss, and what they're seeing is three different results. And I, I think that throws a lot into question about the integrity and the sanctity of our elections. And so, I, I want to make sure that we do all that we can, not just, I know the city doesn't hold any, anything over the elections, but what, what can we do to work with the county to, to improve this process, and so that this doesn't happen again? We made a vote on the fifth motion here about a found ballot. I think that just doesn't sound good from wherever you are, and so, I hope that we can work with the county, with our election judges, to, to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And I thank both candidates for their patience and being, being willing to endure all this, and taking the time to be there for the hand recount, not just them, but their campaign teams, too. And so, I think it's an unfortunate situation.
So now, everybody is going to speak. I, Councilmember Zhang, I'll, I'll talk, and then I call on Councilmember Smith, and then Juneman is, you know, we, we've talked about this once before, about the process, and Mr. Mansky was here once before. We have talked to Commissioner Reinhardt about the process. Commissioner Reinhardt has written us an email about that, so if anybody would want to see that, there, we have an email about the process. You know, elections, we have some of the best integrity in Minnesota, in the country, and I, you know, Mr. Mansky and I have had a long journey, in terms of, I had two recounts, you know, one I requested and lost, one was mandated, and I won. And it was a very, you know, and most of them, it's a little bit predictable that the odds prevail with whoever was ahead. And in this one, there was a tie, and a tie at 5,755 votes is almost statistically astronomical. And so, I, so there, so it has been an amazing situation, you know, I, I think we all think, we don't want to, we don't want to call it the Maplewood miracle, or I don't know what it's being called, but, you know, we, we have our challenges here, but this is, this is something I think has been looked at. I think the county has verified where the votes are, but also, I'd urge you to take a look at that, and that we do, as you're going into legislature, work with Commissioner Reinhardt and the county board. But I, I know our elections are, have, have the utmost integrity, and we, I think, I talked to Councilmember Abrams, I've talked to Councilmember Villa Vicencio a little bit, I was kind of Councilmember to Commissioner Villa Vicencio, and I know that the process was pretty incredible when you saw a hand recount. I mean, it is a ballot, by ballot recount. To be able to see that firsthand, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, look, this is, this is heartbreaking. I mean, I, both of these candidates are people I consider to be friends, and, and people I respect a great deal, and I know, all of us up here know how hard it is to campaign, and, and the sweat, and the tears, and the, and the angst that goes into it, and then to have this month-long process. I, I just can't imagine having to go through that, and I think you both have conducted yourselves with grace, and aplomb, and patience, whereas I don't know that I would have been up to that challenge. So I really give you both a tremendous amount of credit for the way that this has gone through. I agree both with Councilmember Zhang and, and the mayor. I think there's some troubling things that have occurred through this process, however, I also feel like the checks and balances in place in this process have worked, and I think that there is no human endeavor that is, that is perfect in any way, and the fact that the county and the city were able to work together to work through this process and, and get to a, a resolution is, I think, admirable. And, you know, the, this vision of volunteers digging through dozens and dozens of boxes to find one ballot, that's the kind of dedication this team has, and I, I really commend them for it. It would have been nicer if we wouldn't have had to do it, but I'm also glad that we have the volunteers, and the staff, and others who are there to do it, to make sure these, all ballots are counted. So, I, I think it's important that we continue to look at improving the process, but I also am really glad that we have those checks and balances to lean back on when we know that we need them. So, thank you both for all that you've put into running, and I am very certain that Ms. Villa Vicencio is not going anywhere anytime soon, so I'm sure we'll be seeing more from her in the future, and I look forward to serving with Councilmember Abrams. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. All I can say, Joe, is next time, pick on Roseville. I think we've had our turn now, and I do want to commend both of you, Nikki and Mary Lee, for being able to weather this. This is terrible. I can't imagine, you're up, you're down, you're down, you're up, you're down, you're down, you're up. After all the work of doing a campaign, that's got to be very difficult. So my thanks and congratulations to both of you for weathering it as well as you have. And, as our clerk said once tonight, you know, there are humans involved, so sometimes errors are unavoidable, no matter how hard people work. And we had a record turnout in Minnesota again, so you can only imagine how overwhelming this task is from county to county. And I think, in spite of the fact that we got hit, nicked again here in Maplewood, I do think that the county does its best, and I, I am glad to hear from the two candidates and our clerk as well, that the, the recount process is as good as it is, and is as open as it is, and it, you find what you need to find. Because, as Andrea said, people are involved. I imagine even the people who are a little annoyed by this process will admit that occasionally in life, they've made mistakes, and that was a very, very busy day, and it was a very busy month, actually, if you count the early voting. So I think it's amazing that you could bring it together and go and find one ballot. It's wonderful. But thanks to both of you for weathering this. I would have a large case of indigestion, at the very least.
So last, before we take the vote, I do want to thank staff, especially, you know, Andrea Cent. You know, this was totally not in your workload, we know that. Mr. Funk, Melinda Coleman, Mr. Beatty, Mr. Mansky, but it is, it is part of elections, and to the candidates, it's actually pretty amazing. I think it goes as the next chapter in the Maplewood book, but there's more chapters to be written, correct? So with that, Mr. Funk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
He's got his calculator out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just, just a real quick commenting, and I appreciate the comments. I think all of us have been challenged through this, and I know many of us that have worked in government, either serving in capacity like mine, or a city attorney or others, would say that we haven't seen anything like this, and, or ever worked through anything like this. So we appreciate your patience as well, and, and to the candidates. Statistically speaking, I think, just putting this all in context, I think we all value integrity in our systems, and this really, my comment comes from Mr. Mansky, when we met with him and his staff yesterday, who's someone that's dealt with this in elections for many, many years. When you look at the total ballots cast of 17,840, we came down, that means we had 17,836 ballots that were really sound. I mean, our voters take responsibility in voting, and filling out the squares properly, and going through the process of casting their ballots. So, out of eight, out of those 17,840, we had four contested ballots, which, when you do the math on that, is .0002 percent of the ballots cast that were in question. So I think, again, that speaks to our integrity of our voters and those that participated.
Thank you. I forgot, thank you, Ms. Schmidt, so, thanks for your help, and everybody out there who's been, been working on this. But yeah, that's a pretty, pretty amazing odds, and I, I think we should look at it and happened right here, you know? And, so, with that, we are going to take the vote on the motion to approve the resolution canvassing results of recount for council member from the November 27, 28 recount. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing four ayes and no nays, the motion passes. And with that, is there any other business, Mr. Funk?
There is not, Madam Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you all for being here. Thank you, we are adjourned.